Allah, the best... The best way of... I personally, the way I started learning was through question and answers. And I love question and answers. If ever I come here, bring a paragraph of zakah, you'll forget once you leave the hole. But when you come with question and answers, you know that question is for this answer, or that answer for this question. It becomes easier for you to understand them. So... Can I move, Yani? Yeah, Allah. So... Sana rahmaa ina rahim, as-salaam wa ala rasoolinna. In regards to... Yeah, because of that. Speaking about that will indeed clarify most of your doubts. And the question that we put over here, we've put questions that are related to today's life. Related to today's life. And perhaps of those questions, you may have your own questions that you may ask later on. But these questions are put over here that are related to what we usually speak about. One minute. That's Rabi'a. Tell Rabi'a to come today. Zakah. And we know very well, I don't need to indulge into that one, that two ways time. Oopsie. Zakah is just like Salaah. So I can say... Mandatory charitable payment in Islam. An obligation that Muslim give out to purify their wealth and those in need. That money that we get, the money that we get, it needs purification. Perhaps the money that I've got, there could be some filth in there. Maybe it went through this bank. It went through this river. We've got a couple of dirhams of river in there. We're not aware, yes or no? We're getting profit from here and there. They're thinking it's a river, river, not here and there. So taking out zakah, purify that money. You see what I'm saying? Seems like your water. You have a bucket of water. And you know that water, before it came to you, it passed through many processes. And there could be, we need to filter out this water. So filtering out the water, make the water cleaner to drink. Same thing for the zakah. It cleans the money that you have. But this is what zakah is all about. And at the same time, it helps those in need. Zakah helps those in need, which tell you Islam is all about putting a smile in the community's face. This is what Islam is all about. Alright? That's why we have zakah. And Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala made zakah obligatory in the second year after Hijra. In the second year after Hijra, good. The same time Allah made Ramadan obligatory, the same year Allah made zakah obligatory. And Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala eaten every time he said, "Aqimu Salaah, wa ati zakah." "Aqimu Salaah, wa ati zakah." So we would say in 99% of the verses in the Quran where Salaah is mentioned, Abu Kalsadik Rabi'aullahan says zakah is mentioned. For therefore Allah says, "Khud man amwadehim sadiqat antatahirhum, wa zakihin biha wa sadiq alaihim." Allah says, "Take from their wealth, a charity by which you purify them and cause them to increase." Which means, take from the rich one, their charity, and take it from the rich and give it to the poor. That's zakah is all about. What are the benefits of zakah? Number one, it purifies your wealth. It helps the poor. Strengthen the bone in the community. Protects from greed and arrogance, which means that whatever you have, it's teaching you, it's teaching you that it's time for you to not to have any greed and to gain Allah's reward. So each and every time that zakah has been given, we had to understand that Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala next year, this time, He is going to either increase your wealth because of the zakah you're giving today, or Allah Azza wa Jalla is going to take this zakah as your Shaykh on Yamaal Qiyamah. Or Allah is going to talk with balaq that will come in your way. This is the zakah of Allah. This is the charity of Allah. Charity is not only that you be a qani. Charity will bring balaq from your Qadar. If any balaq, any cyclone, any volcano, or any musibah, or any death, or any sickness were to come to you, your zakah is a protection. Your sadiqah is a protection. But therefore giving sadiqah, Subhanallah, it is vast. It's not on knee, putting a smile on the poor people's face, but actually protect yourself. It's for your own masraha. It's for your own benefit. Who must pay zakah? Every Muslim who is an adult and sane, Muslim and a'qil. And the one who has... And the one whose wealth is abbaab nisab. What is the nisab? Nisab is, if you want to see, over here... If you want to see over here, what is the nisab? When we say nisab, it means 85 grams of gold. Of gold. When we say nisab, it means 85 grams of gold. These other things we need to know step by step in order to calculate. And how much is 85 grams of gold? The government of Dubai said this year is 30,000. No, what do you want? You want to zoom? Yeah, this... Close? You want to zoom? Okay, no problem. Put it that way. Again, we say nisab, it means we take it from gold. 85 grams of gold. Equivalency. And we say it is, in dirham, how much? The government says this year it is 30,000. Alright? This is called a nisab. And that person, so that Muslim, that adult and that same person, he's had 30,000 in his bank account as saving. He didn't touch it. He's paid his installment. He's paid his bills. He's paid whatever. This 30,000 as a saving, he didn't use it. Maybe he wants to use it for university later on, for his kids, but now he's not using it. He's got that in his account. And at the same time, he's had it for... It's called a hawul. For a year. One Hijri calendar. Alright? So, any Muslim, Muslim, who is an adult and a sane, he knows what he's doing. An insane person, his pen is lifted. He didn't have to pray, didn't have to go for Hajj because he's insane, he doesn't know what's right and what's wrong. But I, for a Muslim, with an adult and a sane, and he has 30,000 dirhams in his saving, oh! 85 grams of gold kept for her. And he had it for a year, then he has to take a 2.5% of this. Alright, we're gonna come to this one. This is those who have to pay zakah. Number one, adult, adult, sane, and nisab, and hawul. Alright? Over here, a question. Question. If a child, a child who's got 85 grams of gold, maybe their father passed away, and the child is just like, what? Five years old, six years old? And they've got the nisab and the hawul, then yes. Child and orphan. If a child has got 85 grams of gold in his account, he's 10, he's 11 years old. Oh, she has got 85 grams of gold, and she had it for more than a year, zakah has to be calculated. Take 2.5% of what's in there. This is the question, who's going to give zakah? Calculation, we're going to come to it insha'Allah. Alright? I do. Any question? So far, so good. What is the nisab of zakah? We just spoke about it. The nisab is the minimum amount of wealth required to be eligible for zakah. 85 grams of gold and silver. If you have 595 grams of silver and above, then you have to take out zakah on silver. We take out zakah only on gold and silver. Not on diamonds, not on pearls, not on anything else except we take out zakah on gold and silver. Allah says, "Walladina yeknizuna al-dhaba, wal fiddah thumma la yinfiqunaha." For those people who hold or hold gold and silver and they don't give zakah, for them is a punishment. So, these three over here, what we want to speak about today is gold, silver, and cash. We're not going to speak about cows, we're not going to speak about sheep, we're going to speak about camel or crops. What we're going to speak about is these three, gold, silver, and cash. For therefore, very simple. If ever you've got, again, each and everything, whenever it comes to mine, when it comes to gold, simple. I need to take... I just, they always need to put that. When you're writing it down, for example, in three things, I need to take out zakah. In gold, silver, and the cash. Simple, very simple. If my gold is more than 85 grams, and it is more than a year, then I take out how much? 2.5%. If the silver that I have at home, yeah, is more than 595 grams and it is more than a year, then I take out how much? 2.5% of it. If my cash that I have in my salary, in my bank account, at my saving, is more than the Ulama says, take gold as equivalency. Don't go for silver when it comes to cash. Check your cash in gold. If ever you have 85 grams of gold, equivalency. Yeah? For cash. For cash, back in the days, they weren't speaking about cash. So if ever you want to take out zakah on your cash, you check how much you've got in your bank account. If it is more than the price of 85 grams of gold, which is how much we said? How much we said? 30, 30,000 gems. If it's more than that, it's been in your account for more than a year, then you... Look at what we spoke about. Is zakah due on children's wealth? Scholars differ. But the majority of the scholars say that if zakah is due, then zakah has to be removed. From that, money. Even though, let's say, for example, someone whose dad passed away, or whom dad and mother passed away, and he inherited all these gold and money and silver, zakah has to be removed. But the Ulama says, better if ever someone passed away. And your other uncle, your brother passed away, and your other uncle. And you know your niece and your nephew are small, but they've got loads of money. The Ulama says, in this case, it is better for the uncle to, the one responsible for the family now, to invest the money. Invest the money. Open a business for them. This is what the Ulama says. And then at that time, you'll be able to take out zakah while the main money will not be decreased. You see what I'm saying? It will not be decreased. For this is the best thing to do. And it doesn't mean that if our kid didn't know zakah on their cash or inheritance, would they have actually got? Can I delay paying zakah? No. Once zakah is due, it must be paid immediately, as soon as possible. If you know, for example, zakah is due. When do we take out zakah? I will tell you now. In order to make this easier, should I put that debit here? Let's say, for example, we're gonna go back to that question. Before we answer the question, can I delay zakah? So when do we pay zakah? When should zakah be paid? Let's say, for example, by the time you find out now, when? We always have to look at the two condition of zakah, which is nisab and hawul. Nisab means what? The... Yeah, 85 grams of gold, minimum threshold. And the hawul means? Yeah, very good. This means a year. This means the 85 grams of gold. By the time I find out, so now I should check every time, how many, how much dirhams is 85 grams of gold? Alright? I know it is 30,000, as per nowadays. I don't have. Today is mukarram. Today is mukarram. And guess what? 30,000 has hit my saving account. Okay? 30,000 has hit my saving account. Okay? Now, when do I have to take out zakah on this money? Now or after a year? Now there's no zakah on it. It's still okay? Fruit that's raw. It's not ready to be plucked yet. So now, after a year, you take out zakah on it. If ever you find out that today I have 30,000 dirhams, which is 85 grams of gold, from today, my hawul start. One year start. So, let's say if today is mukarram, the next mukarram, I check my bank account again. Do I have 30,000? If this money is still there after a year? After a year? If the amount more than this is there, the answer is yes. You have to take out zakah. And the money that you've got, after you've taken, you know that now it's mukarram, after a year, and you take out zakah. So you get the money, take out your bills, take out your installment, what you have for the last month, and then you take out 2.5% of it. Ain mukarram. Don't wait for Safar, Rabi'ul Awwal, Rabi'ul Thani, or Ramadan. No, if you know, it's reached, mukarram, mukarram. Yes.
But then something came to my mind. If you get, for example, this month you got 30,000 dirham in the bank.
Yeah.
The next month you got a gift of 100 grams of gold. So you pay zakah every month for next year?
For?
Then you pay zakah every month next year? You know what I mean? You got money in December.
Yes.
Then you got gold in February.
Yeah.
Then you got some other things.
The gold, the...
At least, one year will be in December, then one year will be in February.
Yeah.
But two different things.
Yes, for the, yes. For the gold, let's say for the gold. For the gold, in mukarram, you have only 70 grams of gold. But in Dhul Hijjah, you got 90 grams of gold. Let's say in Dhul Hijjah, you've got 90 grams of gold. As for your gold, you need to take out zakah the next Dhul? Dhul Hijjah. But for your money, mukarram. Your money and your gold did not have to be taken at the same time.
No, I mean you bought the things in different months. And then the next year, those things are competing the year in December and the year later.
Yes, yes.
You buy them and you pay them.
No, you pay them differently. You pay them differently. Differently.
So you don't pay zakah two times a year, it was on the different things, while it is competing?
No, no. Paying zakah on cash and paying zakah on on gold, you can pay in different months. Because maybe your gold is not ready for zakah yet. Yes? Your gold not ready for zakah yet. Your cash is ready for zakah this month. So you, you're saying? No. No. You can't wait for Duhur to pray Fajr. You can't wait for Ishaa to pray another. That's why, but, I would tell you something. This is zakah. It's a mistake that we all do. Majority that, when Ramadan come, then we take out zakah. But now, that is not the purpose of zakah. Zakah is for the whole year to have the community benefit from your money. Allah did not put zakah for the community to benefit from your money on Ramadan. Laa. So what happened to the poor people for the rest of the year? We don't give them charity anymore? Laa. I give my zakah in Ramadan. He's giving zakah in Shawwal. He should give her zakah in Bil Qaidah. So now, the community is constantly having zakah. But just to only wait for Ramadan to take out zakah, this is wrong? But if ever your nisab and your hawul has reached in Ramadan, no problem. Take out in Ramadan. But it doesn't mean that I wait for Ramadan because my ajr is going to be more in Ramadan. No. Who said this? Laa. Or else I'll make Hajj in Ramadan. Yes or no? So, we don't make Hajj in Ramadan. We don't get out zakah. If my zakah is due in Ramadan, I give it in Ramadan. If it's not, if it's not. So, when should zakah be paid? We said, after a lunar calendar is done. But Sheikh bin Uthameen rahmaa Allahu, he said, listen, there are people who do not count. People who, they do not count. And then what do they do is, what do they do is, there are many people like that. When it comes to Ramadan, when it comes to Ramadan, they look at their nisab. It's more than the nisab, okay? They take out 2.5% and then they give in zakah. He said, yeah Allah, no problem. Because many people are not able to calculate. So whatever they have in Ramadan, just take out. If it is more than the nisab and they had it for a year, whatever is there, just take out. Whatever is there, just take out 2.5. It's gonna be more actually. 1,000 gems could be more, but that will go in sadiqah. No problem. Okay? Can zakah be given in installment? Yes, if necessary, but full payment should be endured before the due date. If ever you feel a person you want to give you zakah, for example, you know my zakah for this year is 10,000 gems. Okay? My zakah for this year is 10,000 dirhams. But at that moment, I'm unable to give 10,000 gems. But when I look at my silver, I look at my gold, I look at my everything, I need to take out 10,000 dirhams. But now, at the moment, today, 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 I can't take out 10,000 gems. Yeah? So what I do, I can take five and the next month five, no problem. Okay? You're not exceeding the due date. Pardon me? Yeah?
It's actually sort of a consistent question whether we can combine gold and cash together.
Well, to combine gold and cash...
Do we need to add or not?
Do you need to? Different month? Yeah. When we calculate nisab, separated, yeah? Gold is an asset. Your silver is an asset. Your money is an asset. So these are gold in different. Can I delay zakah? Okay. On what kind of wealth zakah is due? We said gold, cash, and saving, gold, silver, business merchandise, agricultural products, livestock, investment assets. And we're going to speak about the cash saving, gold, silver today insha'Allah. Is zakah due on a house or car? Oopsie. Is zakah due on a house or car? Anything that you're using personally, your car, your house that you're living in, there's no zakah on it. By the time you are earning from the car, as a taxi driver, for example, or you're renting the car, or you're renting the house, by the time you're using a car and a and your house as investment, whatever money you get and the profit of it, you take out 2.5% after a year. Simple like that. Not on the house market value, not on the car market value. Is that clear? Some people believe, oh, I have to check on the house market value or the car market value. No. It's the income that you get from, let's say, for example, let's say, for example, wherever I'm living in, I'm using, no zakah. Clear. But let's say, for example, I'm earning, I have cars and I'm earning every, every month. I would say, yeah. From the car, I'm earning 100,000 dirhams. Okay? From the car rental. I have one car. I rent it and per year I'm getting 100,000 dirhams. From that 100,000 dirhams, yeah? I take out my maintenance. Yeah? Because that's not my net profit. That's my, my maintenance, the salary of the driver, petrol, everything, yes or no? How much is left? Let's say, for example, 35,000. Yes or no? Now I have 35,000. At that moment, what do I do? I need to make sure, so now this is what? Is the nisab there, yes or no? I had to wait one year? If I still have it, then I take out zakah on it. Yeah? Well, it's gone. By the time your money comes, 29,999. Yeah? You stop counting the year. You stop counting. Let's say, for example, you've got 30,000 dirhams and then you're counting, mukarram, Safar, Rabi'ul Awwal, Rabi'ul Thani, after four months, your money came 29,000. That's under the threshold, yes or no? At that time, the cancellation of the counting of the month, okay? Khalaas, you stop counting now, finish. You have to wait for this to come, 30,000, to start counting again. Now you start counting again. Let's say, for example, I give an example. I need to take out my zakah in mukarram. I'm using mukarram, not Ramadan, yeah? Mukarram. 30,000, I know I've got today, mukarram. So I'm counting, mukarram, Safar, Rabi'ul Awwal, Rabi'ul Thani. I'm having this. I still have it in my account, yeah? My saving account. Jumaidul Awwal, Jumaidul Thani, after six months, I still have it. In Rajab... what did I do? I decided to use the money. I bought a car. Oh, I bought a bag, costed one thousand dirhams. How much did that come? Twenty-nine thousand. Alright? When it come twenty-nine thousand, kha'as. There's no Zakah on it. Now I have to wait for this to come back to thirty thousand, then I start counting again a year. This is what is, this is what, no, it's not that all what you spend. The only thing you need to know is what is the threshold. How much it is, because it varies, yes or no? The only thing you need to know, how much is eighty-five grams of gold? Okay? Nowadays, it is thirty-two thousand. You have in your mind, thirty-two thousand now. If ever I have my saving account, by the time it hit thirty-two thousand, I'm going to start. You will know, you will know by what eighty-five grams of gold is said by the country. It will go, it goes a little bit up, it goes a little bit down. Let's say for example, nowadays, over here, it's not thirty thousand. It's twenty-nine thousand shwaya. Eighty-five grams of gold is twenty-nine thousand little bit. But the Ulama says here in Imarat is thirty thousand, just to make it round. So now you need to think of it, okay, thirty thousand, once I've got thirty thousand in my bank account, now I start counting. Before that, I don't count. I don't need to check.
So this amount varies throughout the year, twenty-nine, twenty-five, thirty-two, thirty?
Yes. No. You start like how you had at the beginning, when you started. Now, for example, for example, now it's how much? Thirty thousand. No, keep only thirty thousand in your mind for the next year. Simple. You understand? But, by the time, by the time, for example, you want to give out your Zakah, the first thing you had to know is how much is eighty-five grams of gold? Now it's thirty. You got it? Yes. By the time, yes. You understand? If it goes below thirty thousand. Yeah, but then, when it comes, no. When it comes, you have to know, when did it come back to thirty thousand? After one year. It comes back thirty thousand. After that one year, when it comes thirty thousand, you start counting again, because you cannot be, yes? Because you, this was Zakah, whatever. The number, there are people, that's why. The people whose money are always at the limit, they're the one, there is no Zakah for them. It's not, it's not a problem. Okay, there's no Zakah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, anything above the Nisab. As long as it increases above the Nisab, that's fine. That's fine. By the time it goes under the Nisab, you stop counting. Yes. You have to wait for it to reach the Nisab, then start counting one year again. Whatever is there. No, no. By the time, let's say you want to take out this year, you want to know, like for example, now we know thirty thousand, wait for. Look what this caller says, for example, we take a thirty thousand in Imarat. Eighty-five grams of gold. By the time you know it reaches that amount, kha'as. But yeah, it always, it always varies not too much. It doesn't go too much like two, it always go, even it is like nowadays, it's not thirty thousand exactly. It is twenty-nine, and some of the Karats is gold too. We remember once we did the calculation in the class, Letalya, it was twenty-eight thousand shwaya. Some twenty-nine, but the Ulama says make it thirty. Same with the same side. What do you mean? Yeah. Yes, yes. Because you still have the Nisab. As long as the Nisab is in your saving, you have to pay Zakah. Yes. As long as you have, didn't mean that you pay this year, next year you're not gonna pay. Every time you have the Nisab in your saving account for a year, you have to take out the the two point five percent of it. And if ever you take out, look, if we say, Subhanallah, thirty thousand, for example, how much is two point five percent? Do it quickly. I do. Okay, I'm coming to lend them money now. Seven fifty dirhams. For thirty thousand, seven fifty dirhams of Zakah. And even for this seven, seven hundred fifty thousand, uh, dirhams, we had to wait for a year to give it. Look how Allah is merciful. Allah, we go to five-star hotel and one food, we eat like two thousand dirhams. And when it comes to Zakah, Allah give. Very good question, I'm coming to your question. Adi, no Zakah. Whatever you're doing will be no Zakah. As long as you still have twenty-nine thou- I do want thirty thousand, he's going to. Good question. Is Zakah due on debt or to me? Someone owed me money. Now I have, in my account, I have, let's say, in my account, I have twenty thousand dirhams. Okay? That's my account. Am I eligible to pay Zakah? No. But, I've given my friend fifteen thousand dirhams, and I lent him money. How much did I give him? Fifteen. So that mean altogether, how much money do I have as saving? Thirty-five. Yes or no? In reality. But that fifteen thousand, if you know your friend is going to give it to you a hundred percent, hundred percent, he's going to give it to you, then you take out Zakah on thirty-five. But if you know, he might give, he might not give. He might give, he might not give. Then in this case, you don't take out Zakah. Only when you get the money, when he gives it back to you, take two point five percent of this one. Which is three hundred fifty dirhams, something like that. But if you know that he might give, he might not give, there's no Zakah. But the time has given, even for three, four, five years, just take out two point five percent of this amount. Simple like that. Okay? Yeah. If he agrees and you know in a position he's going to give, then yeah. Even after three years. Yeah. No, only for one. Only two point five percent, only. No, only two point five percent. Because you were not sure if he was going to give it back to you or not. Alright? Okay. Some people, they might pass away. Some people, they go bankrupt. You don't know if you're gonna give or not. So you never knew. So by the time you get that fifteen thousand, take two point five percent of it. But if ever, you know the money is there, it just kept there as a deposit, for example, and you know you're gonna get it a hundred percent, then every year take out Zakah, put it together with your saving. Crypto. I come to crypto. We're coming to the land. Allah coming to the land. We go shwaya cash, we go gold. How is Zakah calculated? We already spoken about that one. When should we save? We say lunar calendar, don't go for solar calendar. Go for Muharram, Safar, easier. Can Zakah be given in installment? Who can receive Zakah? Important. Who can receive Zakah? Are those, Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala mentioned about that in Surat Al Taubah. In Surah Nine, verse number sixty, where Allah says, Innamasadaqatu dil fukara wal masaqin wal gamili alaiha wal mualafati qulubhum Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala speak about, who are those who can take out Zakah? The Zen, number one, Alfukara, the poor people. Alright? The poor people. No food, no shelter. They need your money. And the needy, al-masaqin. Why Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala mention Alfukara wal-masaqin? Maybe they mean the same thing. Yes or no? Masaqin, Alfukara, different. A poor person is someone who is poor. No food and no drink and nothing. But a needy person, maybe a person, he's got a house. He's got a car. Middle-class person. But he's got an operation to do, that's gonna cost two hundred thousand. He doesn't have that. He's needy or no? He becomes a needy. Alright? Now he's in need of that money, so he becomes a needy. He's not poor. Is he poor? He's not a poor person. But he needs money to do that lungs operation or whatever operation. So at that moment, what do we do? We help him from Zakah. Totally fine. He becomes a needy. A person who have, who has a house, who has everything as a normal person, but he needs money to get married. He needs money to get married, because the Ulama says it is an essential thing, it's a needy. He needs to get married, but he's got no money to get married. In this case, you can give Zakah to that needy person to get married, to do the, to fulfill the marriage. Not to go and put lights or bring all those kind of people who do mixing and everything, no, no. To do the fulfillment of the marriage, to do the nikah or a Walima. Zakah money can be given to that groom or bride without actually to get married, but they need money. This is totally fine, and Ulama says it is okay. And those who collect the Zakah, there are people, they walk around, they collect the Zakah, they go from countries to countries. These people, they're eligible for Zakah. No problem, if you take the Zakah money, you pay the ticket to go to, for example, they want to go to Saudiya, Imarat, whatever, to come pick up Zakah from the rich people and then go back to Kenya, whatever they are. These people, their ticket can be paid by Zakah money. They're called Zakah collectors. And new Muslims, new Muslims, regardless, they are someone who is in need or not in need. Sometimes you feel that the, the new Muslim, they're coming, they need some, something to push them. You can give them from, from Zakah money, no problem. And the Ulama says, those who are about to enter into Islam, they're not even Muslim. Wal mualafati qulubhum, they're about to enter into Islam, and then they need some money, you can give them from Zakah. So that will, muallafati qulubhum, that will actually soothe their heart. Alright? Then, these are the people Zakah can be given. Slave, we don't have slave anymore. Don't be mistaken, our slave and maids, they're not the same. Your servant at home, Khadama, and the slave are not the same. So don't go home and give your Zakah to your maid, thinking Allah, Allah says, no, they're not the same. But if ever your maid is really poor in her country, she's Muslimah, she's very poor in her country, yeah? You can give her Zakah not as her salary. Zakah on top of it. Don't say kha'as, you know she's working for me, and I'm gonna give her Zakah every month, I pay her one thousand five hundred, that's from my Zakah. One thousand five hundred is her salary, Zakah on top, two thousand we're gonna give her, that's totally fine. And debtors, those who cannot pay their debt. Not every debtors. Everyone over here had installment, yes or no? People bought house, van cruiser, Porsche, and then they said, and then you go give them Zakah? Debtors are those people who has taken money from someone and they're unable to pay the, the debt. Because of that, they could be put in jail. They could be, they're checked good balance. They could be kicked out by the landlord from their house. Then in this case, what happened? You can go and give them Zakah, because they become a debtor that's need. They are in need. So, debtor, those who need, whose lender is looking for their money, I've taken money from someone, and they're saying, I need my money, I need my money, give me my money, that's his haq. In this case, I can't give the money. If you don't give me the money, by the end of September, I'm gonna put you in jail. What do I do? I go take Zakah, Achi, just give me your Zakah. Allah says you can give it, then I take that money and pay my debt, no problem. Debtors, alright? And those in Allah's cause. For those people who go for jihad, those people who go out and study Al-Islam. Those who study Al-Islam, even in Medina, when I was in Medina, we had many students. Subhanallah, but Hamdulillah, we've never taken. But we had people from the Saudiin, Mashallah, they would come to university. They would go to the Mashallah, the people from Africa. They would go give the Zakah to them, thousand dirhams, thousand hundred real, thousand real, give it to them. Why? Because they are Mustahqeen. They are those who deserve the Zakah, because they have left their family, they are Talibul Ilm. The student of knowledge, they can be given Zakah if ever they are in need. Not the rich one, but those who are poor, these are the ones that can. And stranded traveler. A stranded traveler. For example, someone who is a traveler and he's stranded, he's got no money. Even though he's rich in his country. A traveler is rich in his country. He passed by Dubai. He lost his wallet, for example. He's got nowhere to go. He's got no money. In this case, he's someone who's eligible for Zakah. Wabbinis Sabil. There are people who are traveling. If he's a rich person, no. If it's stranded over here, a stranded traveler, someone who's got, you know, when you travel, many things happen. Some people that go to Mecca in the Haram. Really, really, some people, they go there, not those who make up stories. People go there, really sometimes things happen to them. They could be a rich person in their country, but they've gone there, they became sick. They've got no money to buy medicine. And they don't want to go, or they can't go to the government hospital, they had to go to the private hospital, and they don't have the money with them right now. At that moment, they're stranded traveler. A stranded traveler, regardless of the status in their country, it doesn't matter. You can give them Zakah. At that moment, you can give them Zakah. So these are the eight categories of those who can receive Zakah. Eight categories are those who can receive Zakah. Can Zakah be given to family members? Yes. These are the one that you can give. You can give to distant fa- distant relative. You can give to your siblings, to your uncle, to your aunt. If you put in your mind, those who you cannot give Zakah are those who you're responsible towards. Those who are responsible under you. You cannot give Zakah to your mom and your dad. They're not allowed to take your Zakah. You're supposed to spend on them, Aslan. Yes or no? You're not allowed to give Zakah to your children. You're not allowed to give zakah to your children. Because you're responsible for them. Grandparents and grandchildren. Some Ulama say you can. Because you're not responsible for your grandfather, your grandmother. You can give. Some scholar says, "No, because they take the same line." Why? Because if they die, you can inherit from them. Yes or no? If you die, your grandchildren can inherit from you. When it comes to inheriting things, no. Apart from that, you can give distant relatives, your cousin, your uncle, your aunt. You can even give your brother and your sister if ever they are eligible for zakah. And you can give to your aunt, your uncle. It is better, whenever you taking out zakah. Look at the people who are near to you first. Why some people, they, in their own family, they have people eligible for zakah, but they're sending their zakah to Gaza, to Palestine. They're sending their zakah to Africa. But in reality, their own brother and their own sister are part of the eight category of people we spoke about. They don't know. They believe, "Oh no, it's my brother, my sister, I can't give them zakah." No, sometimes you can. If they are part of the eight category of the people we just spoke about. If they're part of it, give them zakah. You get double the reward. When the Sahabi of the Prophet Muhammad SAW about it, he say, "Ya Rasoolallah, am I able to give my kin of, my ta, my kinship a zakah?" He says, "This is double reward." Reward number one, number one is Surah al-Rahim. You are stranded in the Ta'awaf kinship. The reward number two is zakah. So, the ones who are more eligible for your zakah are those who are near to you first. Your family. Check, everyone is okay? Everyone from my family? Okay, let me check my neighbors. Everyone okay? They don't have zakah? No, I check in my country. Everyone is okay? No need any zakah? Then I go internationally. Then I go international. Don't just go straight away, just because it is Syria, it is Africa, it is Palestine. It's straight away, go send it over there. And then my own neighbor, he's got no food. My own neighbor about to be jailed because he's in debt. My own neighbor, for example, he's stranded, no. This is how you have to look at zakah. Or the Qurban. Those who are nearer to you, Allah mentioned in the Quran. Can zakah be given to non-Muslims? No. Zakah cannot be given to non-Muslim only if their potentials convert. And who about to convert? And... But sadqah can be given. Sadqah can be given to Muslim, non-Muslim, rich and the poor. Adi. Sadqah for iftar. Rich and the poor eat. You understand? These are, with of, uh, sadqah. Can zakah be used to build mosque or schools? Can zakah be used to build masjid or school? So now we go back to the eight categories. Is school and masjid there? No. It's not there. So we don't, we don't give our zakah to schools or masjid. Masjid and schools to be built by sadqah. Money, sadqah. But when it come to school... When it come to school, Sheikh Uthameen rahimahullah. He said, "You can give a school only if ever the poor and the needy people are going to study in it." Okay? Let's say, for example, you build a school in... I say, in Africa. Or even Pakistan. Or whatever. You know that this place, there's no... No one. Only poor people. But they need a school. Then, people are not ready to give sadqah. But they have zakah. Then what do you do? You take the zakah money, you build school for them. You can build an orphanage. Orphan. A country. And then in that muntaka, in that district, all orphanages. Their father passed away from malaria. Their mother passed away due to infamine and malnutrition. No one to take care of them. If we don't take care of them, the government gonna take care of them, make them Christian. They go to the church. Because the church in those countries being, are getting money from the government. But not the Muslim communities. So what do I do? I've got 50,000 dirhams of zakah in my account. I build an orphanage. Yes or no? If they're poor and they're needy, then it is permissible. Not masjid, masjid is sadqah. But for the rich, it's going to... But this one, only for the poor. When there's something that's going to be benefited only for the poor, we can give you zakah, Inshaallah. Alright? Even for iftar. Iftar. When it come for iftar, we don't give sadqah. We don't give zakah. But if ever they tell you, they the place that there's no food for suhur or iftar. What do you do? You give your zakah. You understand how Islam understand that? If ever you feel that, at that moment, they need because they are poor and needy? Khalas, give you zakah. But I'm going to give, for example, iftar to Dubai, in Dubai for people, no. Even for the laborers, no. We give sadqah. Because they have their salary. They're able to buy whatever they want. If we don't give them money today, they can go and buy something. For these people, we give sadqah. But for those people in Africa. For those people in different part of the world. There's no food for iftar. Wallahi, speaking to some people in Africa, in Uganda. They're saying, "Sheikh, they eat dry rice." They send me picture. They wait. For iftar, they eat dry rice. And some porridge. You know porridge? This is what they eat for iftar. And they're new Muslim. Wait. So what do they have for suhur? What do they have for iftar? They have nothing. They're eating dry rice with water. One of them, what he was doing? He had bread from before, he was dipping the bread in water for iftar. You tell me. These people, they deserve your zakah, yes or no? Even though it's full, the orphanage for their house, for their food, for the suhur and the iftar, they need your zakah. But if ever you're giving a place like here, your sadqah is sufficient. We speak about that one. Is zakah due on jewelry? Listen. Zakah, when it comes to jewelry. Gold and silver. The answer is? Yes. You're using it? You're not using it? Put them together and give you, give you zakah. As for jewelry, dam, when we spoke about that, there no zakah on that one. But for gold and silver, whatever you have, whatever you're wearing, etc. There is zakah, you're wearing or not wearing. I know some scholar says that if ever you're wearing your gold or your silver, then there's zakah on it. Two school of thoughts, I agree in this one. But the other two school of thoughts, I agree that you give zakah in whatever you wear, whatever you don't wear. Because at the end of the day, it could be an investment later on. Something happened to a lady tomorrow, the third thing, she would say, "I'm selling, I'm selling my gold." She would take out her chain and her bank, goes, "Allah, go and sell it." It's investment. Yes or no? Nowadays, you see some people, Masha Allah, they go to the jewelry shop. They don't even look at designs. They look at the weight of it. What's in their mind? "Oh, when I will sell it after, the price will go up and then we sell it, then we get..." You think it's personal and at the same time, the investment in there. Yes or no? So the Ulama says, whatever you wear, you don't wear. Put them in the balance and then take out 2.5% of it, if you have had it for more than a year. For same thing. It goes same thing. If ever you've got gold. But now we will stop here at the gold thingy. And perhaps in Ramadan, I'll do another one online from Al-Manar itself. And perhaps more people will come in. On the gold. In gold we have 21 karat, 18 karat, 22 and 24. Some scholar says, you take out zakah only on 24. That's it. Zakah is only on 24. Because 24 is pure gold. Sahh, wa nada? Please correct me, sisters. Yeah? The only place I don't enter in my family, jewelry shop. They will go in, my mom and my wife and my kids, I will sit outside having chai. I may have five karat, they still haven't come out. And when they come out, you know how many bags they come out? Not even one. I say, "Why you never buy anything?" "No, we'll go to the other jewelry shop tomorrow." Are they the same, old lady the same? Well, only my house. 24 karat. Al-muhim, al-muhim. There are two ways of taking out gold. Two ways. One, the easy way. And the easy way, you might take out more money in zakah, which is no problem. And the other way is called the way of Diqah, which is the more refinery way, where you're going to take out zakah exactly. We're gonna try to do the both ways today. Alright, we'll stop here because Salaah. Let's say, you have all gold. Alright? I have, let's say for example, let's say for example, I have 90 grams of gold. Alright? So, this is, then the Nisab has reached, yes or no? Yeah? It's more than 85 grams. And then in this 90 grams, which gold do I have more than a year? Which gold I possess more than a year? Okay, I possess 90, 90 grams of gold for more than a year. Okay? How much is 8, 90 grams of gold? How much is 90 grams of gold? If you time, time it by today's gold rate? 30. How much is one gram today? It comes 30? Like approximately, this is 32. Yeah, because 30 is... Yeah. 32,000, alright? So you take out 32,000. 2.5%? Yes? How much did it come? 750? 800? Take 800 dirhams? As zakah. If ever you take it out. If your husband wants to take it out for you, may Allah bless him, he can do that as well. Yeah, it's for the wife. The gold belong to the wife. Huh? Then the husband take it out. If the husband didn't want to take out, then they have to sell. Sell the gold, take out the... Yes. Yeah, yes. But usually, the husband, you know... So, this is how it is. Same thing for the silver. Yeah? Uh, for the grams as well. Now, let's say, you have 22, 18. So this one now, you might... Yeah, you might take your chapala and throw at me now, Sheikh. Let's say, for example, you check your, you open your jewelry box. You take out all your 18 karat of gold. That's 18, 18, 18, 18. Alright? This 18 karat of gold? 18 karat of gold? I check, ah... I have, for 18 karat of gold? Do I have 80, 85 grams? Let's say, I have... Let's say, I have 80 grams of gold, 18 karat of gold. So for 18 karat, there's no? There's no zakah. I open my 21 karat. I check all my 21 karat of gold. Oh, when I put all together, it is approximately 100. 100 grams, yes or no? 21 karat of gold is 100, is 100 grams. Now that 100 gram is not pure gold. Is it or no? It's not pure gold. So what do we do? Let's say... In this case, now I want to know in that 21 karat, in that 100 grams of gold, how many pure gold are there? I need to take out zakah on pure gold, yes or no? Not on stone, not anything. So what do I do? I do 100 grams. Yeah? Times 21. The karat, yes or no? Okay? We divide by how much? 24. Do that? Why 24? Huh? 87.5? Grams. So for my 21 karat of gold that I have. Yeah? How many grams is it reality pure gold? 87. Not 100. So, when I found, when I did that calculation of my 21 karat of gold, do I have to take out zakah or no? Why? Because it's more than the Nisab. You see? You can. You can. You apply the same logic. How many grams do you have? Times by the karat and divide by the 24 because 24 is pure gold. If you have more than 85, you take out zakah on, on that. Huh? Well, I, I hate math. That's, that's new for everyone. This is how we take out, if you want it to be, I mean with, I mean with precision. You do that for the 18, for the 21, for the 22 and for whatever you have. 24, you don't need to do that because already 24. And then if you feel it's more than 85 grams, then you take out. You do for the 22 as well and for 24 as well. Then you take out zakah. Sometimes the gold that I have, I don't need to take out zakah. But I'm taking out zakah. So when you do all these calculations, perhaps you feel like, "Oh, there's no zakah for me this year." When you have, when you did the calculation, sahah, properly. See how it goes. Number of grams? The karat, divide by 24, you get the pure gold. You take out zakah on the pure gold. No... On this. On this, you take out 2.5%. And then, if ever you have more, you can add it to that and then take out 2.5%. Alright? So this is gold, this is silver and this is cash. Perhaps later on, if ever, you have sheep, you have cows, you have crops, we can speak about that later on. Land. Let me finish with the land because she asked for the land. I think people have this land. In regards to land. In regards to land. If you have a land for personal purpose, there's no zakah. I bought a land, I want to build a house later on. Okay? I put it in this way. Anyway. If I have a land, land is going to three categories, alright? Three categories. Number one. I bought a land for personal use. No zakah. Took it. I bought a land for personal use, there's no zakah. Why? Because that's personal use. Maybe it's for me and for my child, Inshaallah, they're going to use that. If I buy if I buy one for investment. I'm buying it now because I know after two, three years, the price is gonna go up. I'm buying it now because I know after two, three years, the price is going to go up. Then what do I do? There's zakah. Yes or no? Every year, you take out two point five percent? Two point five percent of it? Of the what? Of the value market if you possess the land. If the land is in your name. If the land is not in your name, in the name of the bank, it's in the name of the real estate, then there's no zakah because it's not your possession yet. By the time the name is under my, the land is in my name, the name Aya is Halsey, that's my land. Alright? Now it's my land, I take out zakah on it every year, two point five percent, after the market value. The market value is about, for example, how much? Two hundred thousand? I take out zakah on that one. If ever I bought one for personal and maybe investment later, I don't know. I don't know. Maybe I will sell it or maybe I will keep it. In this case, there is no zakah. Yes. Same thing. For flats and everything are fine. Flats, you never pay for the market value of a flat. You always pay for the profit what you get from the flat. You understand what I'm saying? The profit that you get from the flat, from rental, or for example, after you've sold the, the flat, the money that you get, you take out two point five percent of it if you have it for more than a year. Simple like that. Okay, sister? That's for the land? Yes, same thing. Same thing.
So one, one question, uh, because it's happened, I know people that have
Yes.
Come into this situation where they bought land thirty years back.
Yeah.
And it's not just one place, they were accumulated like twenty plots.
Yes.
Now the market value is such that it's worth easily ten, twenty million dirhams. Easy.
Yeah.
But they don't have five hundred thousand dirhams to give away like that.
Yes. When they sell, yeah, in this case, when they sell the property... No. When they sell, yeah. When they sell the property, then they had to count and then give out zakah. What? As long as the money was in his, the land was in his possession, the amount of time the money, the land was in his possession, two, three, four, five, six, seven, he had to take out zakah and count and calculate it. Diamond? No, no, no. Pardon me? Yes, the gold has to be weighed. So then, you go to the jewelry shop, they will tell you what's the, the gold and what they think, then they will tell you with the how many grams. Yeah. No, but are you going to get back the amount again? You, this amount you're going to get later on. Yes. You had to pay, it's part of it, it's a saving. Yeah. Yeah. When you get the money, then you pay. Yes, yes. Need, yeah. Yes. Good question. If I need to give anyone zakah, do I need to say it's zakah money? No. Just give them the money, that's for you. Simple like that. Sometimes interest get accumulated in, in the West, in America, in Canada, where all, where interest get accumulated in the bank account every year. Big chunk. Sometimes one thousand pounds, two thousand pounds. You take that money and you give it to a poor person. You don't need to turn in that interest money. It is halal for him to use, but haram for you to use. Same thing for the zakah. They don't have to, to know it's zakah. Just give it, that's your money. Take it and use it. To give? No. You can give to Muslims, you can give to non-Muslims, you can give... You, what you have to do with the interest money is to get rid of it. Simple like that. Give it to a good cause. But it is not Sadaqah on your behalf. You may get the reward of not using something haram. But this is not Sadaqah. You can give, if you feel your neighbor is in need of something, you give them the, the interest money. You feel they're building something later on somewhere there, that money for you is haram. But the time you're giving it to someone, it's not haram for him. It's, it's halal for them. This is what we do in regards to this one, and we hope that, that will... Yes, you, when you, you, the, the salary that you have at the end of the year, not every month. At the end of the year, the man... The month? Yeah? Yeah, it's saving. Whatever money is you have, you got, whatever you have a use from your salary, this will be cash. If ever, whatever you have a use from your salary, you've put it in a, in a saving account, yes or no? Or you've taken away, it's, it's saving. Same account. You put it in the cash that you have. After a year, you know that it's written in Nisab. No, then you, you do not spend, you do not start calculating zakah until you know thirty thousand and above is there. It's there. It's there. Yes. Okay. Yes, whatever, at the end of the year, whatever you've got on top of the, of the thirty, you put with this thirty together, maybe at the end of the year became...